Well, welcome to the League of Women Voters of Manatee County Candidate Forum. I'm Alice Nolan and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of Manatee County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan public policy organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. The League has both women and men, and it does not support or oppose any candidate or party. Before we start our program, I'd like to highlight the League of Women Voters Voters Guide, vote411.org. It's a nationwide nationwide program. So anyone, anywhere in the country can put in their address and get personalized comparison of the candidates who are seeking their vote. The information will be available in a couple of weeks. And candidates, if you have not yet done so, please complete your questionnaires. We also, in the general election, have printed guides that are in libraries, government buildings, and some community centers, retirement homes. We're pleased to have with us today the candidates for the Manatee County School Board District 5, Reverend James Golden, Colonel Richard Tatum, and Chantal Wilford. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, and then they will have one minute to answer questions. Carolyn Sheets, our Voter Services Action Chair, will hold up this sign when the time is complete. Finish your sentence, and we will move on to the next candidate. We ask that all candidates speak only for themselves and not provide insight into their opponents' positions. There will be no rebuttals. This presentation is being recorded and will be posted on the League of Women Voters' website, Manatee County, and METV, the educational television channel for Manatee County, YouTube channel. Reference can be made to it. You can refer to the website. You can show it in its entirety. However, it is the property of the League of Women Voters and cannot be used at an event or on without written permission from the League of Women Voters of Manatee County. We will be taking questions for the candidates, so please put them in chat. Ruth Harinchar, our Vice President, will be monitoring chat and present chat questions to the candidates. Chat is only for questions for the candidates. No comments or side conversations. It's distracting to people trying to listen to the candidates. So let's get started. The first question, what have you done to prepare yourself to be an effective school board member? And we will start with Colonel Tatum.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's real pleasure to be here. This is how we participate in our democracy. One of my favorite authors is a gentleman named Alexis de Tocqueville. He wrote a great book called Democracy in America, and he talked about civic organizations, just like the League of Women Voters, being absolutely essential to our democracy working in America. So to answer the specific question that was posed there, how have I prepared myself to be a school board member here in Manatee County? I think there are three primary ways. First of all, I spent 30 years in the Air Force, was able to have the privilege of rising to the rank of Colonel. Obviously, during that time, I worked at a number of headquarters jobs, and I led a number of organizations. And so I think there are three components that we might look for in a Manatee County school board member. The first might be leadership, and that's what I call how to win friends and influence people, if we read that book by Dale Carnegie. And so I'm actually a leadership educator on the outside, and I'm an executive coach, and I did some of that in the Air Force. So I think my leadership skills are honed pretty well, so I've prepared myself, not only by leading, but actually studying leadership and being an executive coach and helping others be leaders. The second aspect I think that's important is management. You might ask, how does management differ from leadership? Well, management is this ability to have the experience of working in large bureaucracies, understanding rules, especially government rules. And you know, I was certified in the Air Force Planning Budget and Executing Process, which I managed a portfolio of about $500 million in the Air Force, Air Force assets. So I'm certified in that and have experience managing within those large government bureaucracies. And then finally, something unique that I think I bring to the table is my academic experience. I was an assistant professor at the United States Air Force Academy. I've been a course director. I've developed curriculum. I've taught locally at SCSC, and I'm a substitute teacher. So you combine the leadership, the management, and the academic experience. I think that's a very good fit for the school board, and that's how I've prepared myself to be a school board member, as well as I'm now talking and walking and getting a lot of information from parents, from concerned citizens, constituents in the county. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And this is two minutes. I'm sorry, I didn't specify that that was the opening statement. Reverend Golden.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, first off, to participate in this forum. I have not done anything to prepare myself to be a part of the school board. What I have been able to do is to use the preparations in other aspects of my life to bring to bear in service to the community on the school board. I have not just sought to be a member of the school board. I have sought to try to serve the community in any way that I can, wherever I've been. I am the son of two public school teachers. I have served as a chair of many of our community organizations here in Manatee County. I've been chair of the Center Stone Behavioral Health Hospital System here. I serve on the National Foundation Board. I serve with them in their advocacy for mental health. I now have served as chair for the last year of the school board. Last year, I served as vice chair. So since being elected in 2018 to become a part of a school board that I promised would be more civil, that I promised would be more stable, that I promised would be focused on trying to provide continuity of quality education to the community, not just for the time that I'm on it, but from now going forward. I have kept those promises, and I've been able to do that because of the experiences that I've had before coming here. Thank you.
And candidate Wilford.
Hello. Thank you for hosting this for all of us and giving voters, you know, a chance to meet the candidates in this way. So I do really appreciate that. As far as what I have done, I started in education. I studied pedagogy in the Netherlands, where I trained to teach French to Dutch secondary school children. I then taught after I then did my degree in England, and then I taught English in Paris for a couple of years before coming back to the States. Where, fast forward, my husband and I have four children, and we made the decision to homeschool them for the first 10 years of their lives. So with four kids, that was 14 years of homeschooling here in Manatee County. They transitioned to public schools for fifth grade. So they've been in public school for 10 years now, and we have seven left. So that is my motivation. I have no one left to homeschool, so I want to pivot my focus back to public education. So having that educational background and the children in the schools, I think, is preparation. But beyond that, I reach out to teachers. I reach out to administration in the district and learn about what's going on and what is affecting our students. And that's why I'm here, to support the students and to support the teachers.
Thank you. Candidate Golden, how would you describe what success looks like for the school district?
First and foremost, it would be reflected in how the children who use the school district feel about what they are learning there and how they carry that forward after they complete the 12-year tenure. While we may divide public education into 12 segments, the reality is that we are preparing children for life. And I would submit that over the last four years, since I've been on the board, that we have seen tremendous successes in the way our students represent not only the schools from which they come, but from the community in which they live. We have international champions in every aspect of public education coming out of Manatee County, from the liberal arts to the sciences, to the technologies, to engineering. And that is something that is very much to be proud of, as well as those people who want to invest in the public school system here in Manatee County, the latest being the oceanic set aspect that was given to us out at Anna Maria Island Elementary.
Thank you. Candidate Wilford, how would you define success?
Well, I think that success is more than grades, whether it's scores, like the FSA scores, or the school individual grades, or even the district grade. I think it is about having enough preparation for our students so that they are ready for either careers or college, and as Reverend Golden says, for life. So I think we need well-rounded students. So success for me would be investment in not just academics, but also the fine arts and music programs. And I think that's crucial to, you know, athletics, just the whole package, more than a score, but all aspects of learning should be supported.
Thank you. And candidate Tatum.
Now, one unique idea that I have in this area, when I was in the Air Force, I did a lot of flying training, and I developed a lot of flying training. And what we would do afterwards, as these flying students would go out in the operational air force, we would actually go to them and go to their supervisors, their flying supervisors, and say, did our program prepare this student well for the mission that they have to do? And I'd actually like to get maybe surveys, and maybe this happens, I don't know, but surveys back from students, maybe, you know, two, four, and five years down the road, and say, did the Manatee County School System prepare you well? If yes, how? And if not, what could we do better? I think that would be a very interesting plan to put in place, to get some feedback into the system. To do it, you know what Booker T. Washington, one of my favorite American, great Americans, historical great Americans, said, prepare the head and the hands and the heart, because that's what we really need when we go out into society, is in our hands and our heart well-prepared. And it'd be interesting, along with, you know, there are some testing scores. We have to get some evaluation done, but a post-educational survey might be an interesting tool to find out if our students actually feel like they were well-prepared to succeed in the military, vocational school, you know, college, whatever they choose to do afterwards. Thank you.
And Wilford, what would you do as a school board member to address the need to attract and retain employees, especially teachers? Let me do the follow-up. Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. For, this is very important. I think supporting our teachers really is crucial, and not just financially, of course, you know, having a decent wage, but I think we need to restore trust in our education professionals, and I think that we need to give them the support. I think a lot of them are spending a lot of their time managing behaviors rather than being able to teach. So I think we need to invest more money in human beings in this district and not, you know, some of the computer-based technology that we have. So paraprofessionals, we need some board-certified behavior analysts, we need guidance counselors. Those are the people who can support our teachers so they can, you know, teach more and, you know, do what they love to do. And that's where I would go with that.
Okay, candidate Tatum.
So two aspects here that come out of my leadership training that I've done, as well as leadership. One is more management, providing, you know, competitive pay and benefits. That's just, you know, the old saying, you get what you pay for, right? So you get what you pay for. We need to be paying competitive pay and benefits. The second idea, though, is leadership. And what I mean by that is remember, winning friends and influencing people, building relationships. In the leadership world, we like to say that a lot of people don't leave their job, they leave their bosses. I'd really like to invest in, and I've seen this in the leadership world, education world where I am, that if you can get bosses to be better bosses, right? Supervisors, principals, assistant principals, where they walk in every day and they say, my job isn't to come here and make decisions. My job is to walk in and figure out, how can I help all these people around me? How can I be helpful to them so that they can do their job? I think, oh, what a different place it would be. And we would really up retention when people came in and they thought, the boss is here to help me, the boss is not here to order me around, to evaluate me, and stuff like that. So there are actually programs out there we can bring in for some of these senior leaders to get them more in that mindset of, how can I be helpful instead of my job is to walk in and order people around? Thank you.
And candidate Golden.
You may recall, during the last four years, the University of South Florida was going to end their Department of Education. Obviously, that is a problem when you're trying to attract teachers into our community. We led the effort to get them to reverse that decision, and it was reversed. Part of the problem that we have with recruiting teachers into public education is that there are so many obstacles to providing what they went to school to learn, education to children. We're committed here in the Manatee County School System to, one, making sure that we pay competitive salaries to our teachers. Number two, making sure that we're on the cutting edge of the development of curriculum that is going to be helpful to our children, that it is innovative and that is imaginative. But most importantly, number three, that we provide students that the community can use to keep up the quality of life in the community for everybody.
Thank you. Now, we're going to have the follow-up question to that. Affordable housing is a big part of the problem of attracting and retaining teachers and all school employees. What would you see as your role as a school board member to address this issue? And we're going to start with candidate Tatum.
So we obviously want to have adequate and affordable housing in the county. However, the school board, apart from impact fees, and I've actually watched the videos on these and listened to the school board members and listened to the legal opinions that have been given, apart from influencing impact fees and seeing how we might be able to work with them to make housing more affordable, I don't know what it is that exactly the school board in its, within its defined responsibilities could do about affordable housing. I mean, there are some ideas out there about using different land and using different buildings, but again, if you've listened to the videos at the school board, the lawyers are very circumspect about doing anything other beyond, you know, beyond using impact fees to help builders make more affordable housing. So that's what I would primarily focus on. I wouldn't want to go beyond the bounds of what is legally required and what the legal responsibilities are of the school system. I want, I do want to impact it, but without going outside the bounds of what the school system should be focused on. When we go there, we tend to branch off down into rabbit holes. I want to stay focused on education of children in Manatee County for the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Golden.
Thank you very much. There are two schools of thought with respect to the use of impact fees to deal with the crisis of attainable housing in the community. Right now, the county and the school board are in deliberations and discussions about whether we're going to continue the present methodology of calculating impact fees, or whether we're going to change the methodology for collecting impact fees to affect capacity to provide attainable housing. That discussion is ongoing. I'm not quite so sure that this is the proper forum for me to give an opinion as to which of those perspectives I think would be beneficial. So suffice to say that this is an ongoing dialogue right now with respect to the current school board. As a matter of fact, we just recently had a workshop on this particular issue. Thank you.
And candidate Wilford.
Thank you. You know, I am not, I'm not sure what the school district is able to do, what position that they can, you know, have to make more affordable housing options available. I think this is a definite problem that is affecting our schools. I spoke with one principal who said, you know, they're trying to, you know, attract teachers even from out of state, but they have to make sure that these teachers realize what they're coming into. Can they even find affordable housing in this area? And that's a major consideration for not just hiring, but retaining teachers, because right now, you know, rents are going up, and that affects, you know, our students, our families as well, but also teachers who may have to look for, you know, a second or even a third job to make ends meet. And that's a problem, and I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. All right. This is going to be Golden's question, starting, and it's a little long. The diverse student population of Manatee School District reflects our community's population. Based on the 2021 data from the Florida Department of Children of Education, over half of Manatee School District's students live at the poverty level. Among the overall student population, 56% of the children are children of color and 44% are white. In addition, almost 20% of the students of Manatee County's public schools are English-language learners. With a population this diverse in our public schools, what will you, as a school board member, do to ensure that everyone's children successfully engages in rigorous and relevant education? Reverend Golden.
The reflection in the statistics that you just cited only confirms that we're much more diverse today than we were 10 years or 20 years ago in Manatee County. That means that the stewardship of the public school system must be extra diligent and make the effort to be more equitable in terms of how we use the resources that are available to us from the tax dollars that are there. We need to use every resource that we can to be as equitable as we can to all of the children that are here now. The object of that would simply be to provide a more inclusive community, a more inclusive place for people to work, to live, and to be, to be a part of an overall society that is committed to improving the quality of life from one generation to the next. Thank you.
And candidate Wilford.
I think it's a wonderful thing that we are, that we do have a more diverse district, and I think it's very important that we cater our instruction to those diverse student bodies. So I think we have some great initiatives so far with dual language programs at a couple of our schools, where children can get instruction in both Spanish and in English. I believe we have something like 98 languages, you know, represented in our district, which is amazing to me. So I'd like to see more of that, more instruction, but diversifying also our teachers and having more professional development available to our teachers so that they can engage in more culturally responsive teaching, so that they have more instructional materials that are relevant to the student demographics that they're, that they have.
And candidate Tatum.
So I like the idea of the language programs. I think that's good, you know? Having dual languages helps the brain, there's no doubt about that. Professional development for teachers, basically leadership skills. You know, when you're in a classroom, I'm a substitute teacher also, and I taught at college. So being in a classroom, you are a leader in some ways, or providing some professional development as well as leadership goes. But you know, one of my favorite economists is a gentleman named Thomas Sowell. He's a 91-year-old black economist, and he's done a lot of teaching. Obviously, he's a professor of economics. And he says, you know, the one thing that I did with everybody is I set a common standard, and then it didn't matter, you know, what type of people there were that I was teaching, I just had them meet the standard. And some people grumbled, and some people thought we should have made some differences. But what I found that is, if you set the standard and you help people to the standard, all types of people would rise to the standard and achieve it. And so while we can do some things, like, you know, the dual language programs, providing professional development to teachers, we should have a common standard and have the expectation, and no matter what kind of people we have in our schools, what kind of students, they will rise to the occasion if we provide them a good educational environment. Thank you.
Okay. This next question is for candidate Wilford, starting out. The voters of Manatee County have twice passed a referendum to increase the funding for Manatee schools, as have school districts surrounding us. Why do you think this is necessary? And if not, what could the school district do to afford the needed services without taxing the citizens? So candidate Wilford.
Thank you. Well, I think it has brought in a lot of financial stability to the district, because I think we were struggling with that for a while, and I think recovered from that, and that millage has helped with that. I think it's unfortunate that part of this teacher salaries is tied to that, because I think that gives our teachers financial instability. They have to wait, you know, every four years to see if the community is going to support them again. Fortunately, our community has overwhelmingly supported that. It does also mean longer school days for our kids, but I think that has been a benefit. And I would, I would like for teacher salaries not to be dependent on that, but I just don't think that that's how the state has structured the different pots of money that we can take from to make that happen.
Yep. Candidate Tatum.
Sure. So I did support the millage primarily because I believe that, I know that in talking to the school board members, that the teachers and other school employers were going to take a significant salary hit, and that was unacceptable in a time of rising inflation and rising housing prices. And so I agree with Ms. Wilford that it's a bad management practice to, every four years, make, you know, put people's salaries up for a decision through the voters. I think that's a bad management practice. I believe the question was focused on services, though. You know, there are a lot of great organizations out there that we can partner with without necessarily having to expend school resource. For instance, I volunteer with FELP, Feeding Empty Little Tummies. They provide approximately 1,300 bags of meals to children who feel like they might have not have enough nutrition during the weekend. And so I'm a big fan of those kind of partnerships, where we can provide services without, again, taking the focus off the school system and its resources, which should be primarily focused on providing an excellent educational environment. Thank you.
And candidate Golden. Oh, you're mute. He's muted. Yeah.
The issue of extending the millage will arise every four years. Now, it will arise in the years of general elections as opposed to special elections, which has been an issue in the past, but it will arise until and unless the state of Florida invests more money in public education and stop trying to figure out ways to get quality education out of less-than-quality funding. We are in the bottom 10% of the states in the United States as it relates to per capita education funding. There's no getting around it. You will either invest in education, or you will pay the price in the future for the failure to make that investment. And it is really not, it is really not, it just defies the imagination how we can say we will ignore whether or not there's adequate funding for public education around the state, and then talk about not using the right resources here that we do have available to us to overcome that.
Thank you. I'm going to take Thank you. Um, I'm going to take, uh, a couple of questions from chat and then go back to ours. So Ruth, do you have a question for chat, from chat?
Yes. This question was actually addressed to candidate Tatum, but I suspect it's something that all three should answer. Um, so we can start with candidate Tatum. Can you provide a specific scenario in which CRT is taught in a classroom? And how would this be addressed in a teacher's lesson plan?
The, the, the first person on this one would be candidate Tatum.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. So I'm looking at a Facebook post right now. I won't name the person because, you know, let's keep people anonymous, but here's what it says. My granddaughter came home from a school in Manatee County, told me how a teacher took them to a classroom for extra learning for math, promptly stated, saying how the white people keep us down. They want us in jail. They shouldn't have done that. Teacher should have been fired, pushing her den- agenda. Shame on the teacher for pushing her agenda. Shame on everyone for not knowing this is happening. It is real. I think I'll let that speak for itself. Thank you.
Okay, candidate Golden.
Critical race theory is a theory that was developed many, many years ago to address the concerns of the legal community about arrest, trial, and detention of minority suspects. What has happened is that other people have taken those words and used them as a dog whistle to try to inject that particular consideration into public education. Critical race theory has never been taught in the public school system in Florida. Nor is it something that is going to be taught because it has not been approved as a curriculum choice in the state of Florida. That is a non-issue. The reality that we have to deal with here is the fact that this is being used to take our attention away from the real problems that we have in public education in the state of Florida.
Thank you, Reverend Golden. And candidate Wilford.
Thank you. Um, I, you know, as I said, I, I have four children in the, um, district. Two have, uh, just finished high school. One is in high school. I have not seen or heard of any, uh, evidence of CRT being taught in any of their classes, even higher level AP classes. Um, I don't see it. I have reached out to, um, at least four different, uh, history and civics teachers in this district and Sarasota district. And, um, they also assure me it is not in our schools. It's just, it, it just isn't. Um, I spoke with a principal of, over twenty years and he said, you know, um, he had to look it up when it, you know, when it was, um, coming out in the news that this was a problem. So I just don't see it being, um, in our schools. So I believe, um, it's a non-issue, um, for us in K-12 and that it is, as Reverend Golden said, a, um, a graduate level, uh, issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, do we have another question, Ruth? And then I'll go back to our.
Yes, we have a question related, uh, this would be for every candidate. And it's a question, how do the candidates explain the reading disparity of African-American students in Manatee County? That's a reading disparity of African-American students in Manatee County. Do you think this is an issue that needs to be addressed? And if so, how can it be addressed?
And this, uh, is, starts with Reverend Golden.
Okay. There is a reading disparity. There is a, a writing disparity. There is a quality of public education disparity that exists, not only in Manatee County, not only in the state of Florida, but it exists in this country. We are in the midst of trying to treat each other more equitably. And the worst thing that we can do is not learn from the lessons that were taught to us in our history. I am a man of faith. The scriptures that I read teach me that my people perish for the lack of knowledge. And I can't begin to enumerate in one minute all of the ways that minority children have been deprived of and denied the equitable access to resources for public education. Going all the way back to my own, when my own school books had the names of many children from the white schools on the other side of town that we got as hand-me-downs. So if you really wanna talk about changing things, change the way we think about public education as being a proprietary partisan effort, when it are, when it should be something that is nonpartisan and non-prop- proprietary, public education should be something that everybody has, as well as public health. Thank you.
Um, and candidate Wilford.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, um, I am a birth doula and I teach childbirth education and I've been doing that since two thousand and five. And in the maternity world, the birth world, um, we see disparities as well. You know, with black maternal mortality is three times that of white women. Um, infant mortality for black babies is twice that of white children. And part of that reason is, um, implicit bias and, uh, lack of access to healthcare. And I think that translates to the education world as well. We see it in the literacy rates. And I think access to, um, before and after-school programs, summer programs for literacy is part of that, um, effort, um, or part of that problem. And so that needs to be addressed in the classrooms with, um, a more diverse, um, uh, teachers and, um, and a real look at our history in every aspect.
Thank you. And candidate Tatum.
So these are very complex problems when you say, why are large groups of people not performing like everybody else? But to answer that in one minute is not possible. I will just tell you that if you look around the country and you re- and do your research on this subject, you will find that there are lots of schools, different areas of the country, different types of schools that are succeeding with children that have all skin colors, brown, black, and white. One that comes particular to mind is the great story of Jaime Escalante out in California, who took primarily Hispanic students who were underperforming in math and made them such great calculus students. When they took the, I think it was the AP Calculus test, the, when they got the scores back, the, the system, the AP people said, you all cheated. We don't believe your scores because you've scored so high, better than almost every other s- class of students in the country or, and they made, and so they took the, the test again and they got the same score. So i- to explain that in one minute is very complicated. My point is that there are other places and schools succeeding around the country. We need to go out and find people who have invented the wheel that we would like to emulate and not necessarily go out and reinvent the wheel. There are ways to help these children succeed and we just need to find them. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this next question will start with candidate Wilford. Effective communication with parents and the community is essential. What will you do as a school board member to ensure that the work of the school board is easily accessible and transparent?
That is a great question and communication, I think, is really key, um, between parents and the school board um, and between parents and teachers and, and students and teachers. So I think the, um, district does a good job of putting a lot of information on the website. Some of it may be a little bit more difficult to find, but, um, I think it, it is there. Um, I think it might be more helpful in meetings to listen more to people. It gives them maybe a little bit more time to express their ideas, maybe have a little bit more dialogue, um, at the meeting so that people can feel listened to, um, and, and feel heard. And I think that would really help with, um, communication.
Thank you. Candidate Tatum.
So in the leadership world, one thing we talk about is learning about people's needs, objectives, and challenges. Because if we don't know those, we really don't know how to help them achieve the goals that they have. So one thing that I'm gonna be doing is having regular meetings, what I call the meet-to-learns. And basically, you know, at a library, maybe someplace, just put it out there in the public, hey, I'm gonna be at the library on this day, at this time. Try and do one of these once a month and just sit down and it's primary list, you know, me being there, meet to learn. What are your needs, objectives, and challenges as far as your students go, what you're experiencing in the lives of your students? And then take that back and use that to go back to the board. So, and I can then interact with, and I can take questions too. I can be very transparent at that point about what's going on with the board. There needs to be more. I've noticed that the school board members, to some degree, they'll, they'll, they'll meet with you if you go to them. But I don't see a lot of outreach from the school board members to the community to go out and say, hey, here I am, come see me. I'm gonna be at this place at this time. That would be great for, to answer this question about more transparency, more communication. And that's what I'll be doing on the school board. Thank you.
And candidate Golden.
Thank you very much. One of the first, one of the first things that I did, uh, when I began my term four years ago was to go out to the Lakewood Ranch YMCA and ask for a time to be able to meet parents, uh, at the YMCA. Uh, I think it was a Thursday night. Uh, the thing that disrupted that, uh, obviously was the, uh, the, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, impacted that. Uh, someone is even printing in the chat, now why did you stop doing this, Mr. Golden? I stopped doing it because of COVID. That's, uh, we've, I've been doing that. Now, since that stopped though, since I've been on the board, what I have tried to do is to expand the time for public comment to allow more time to hear from the public about their issues. We extended that to now where we have public comment at the beginning. And if we have a sufficient number, we've also included that in our, uh, in our, uh, uh, agenda uh, so that we could hear from, uh, from, from the people. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. And this is for candidate Tatum, uh, starting off. Struggling readers have been the focus of the school district for many years. What do you believe can be done so that all teachers, no matter their subject matter, can support literacy pre-K through twelfth grade?
I'll use my brain for a second before I use my mouth. That's always a good lesson in life. Again, this is one of those situations where, you know, how would I improve reading for students all across the system? We're not all experts on everything that, that, that we're supposed to address, finances, reading, curriculum development, all these type of things. I, again, I go out to, there are people who have solved these problems around the country, how to have, how to improve reading, how to improve math scores. And I suggest that we really go out and find people who have invented these wheels and copy those wheels. But one thing that I do know as a teacher myself is that providing focused tutoring. When I was at the Air Force Academy, I basically had office hours and students would come in and focused tutoring is really important. And if there was some type of program, maybe for instance, where we could even pay teachers to stay a little bit late after school. And, and again, maybe, maybe we're doing this, but, and, you know, pay them a little extra and children that wanted to stay and focus and get that extra tutoring in reading. If we can improve their reading skills with focused tutoring, that would translate across history, across, across math and some of the other subjects where obviously students have to do that type of reading. So number one, finding programs. Number two, tutoring, extra tutoring. Thank you.
And candidate Golden.
Thank you very much. George Kenworthy is a retired, uh, director, uh, curriculum director up in Ohio. Sent me a letter some time ago. He says, uh, one of the things that we can do to address the, uh, reading problem uh, after the children are in school is to make sure that all of the teachers, regardless of their area, are able to incorporate into their learning area, um, reading to determine, uh, the level of children's reading. The other thing that we, uh, that we are focusing on is that reading doesn't begin to be a problem when you start the first grade and then don't get to the third grade reading level. It starts to be a problem before then. And so now we are trying to insinuate ourselves in the process of pre-first grade reading and pre-first grade education, recognizing and realizing something that hasn't been mentioned. And that is that there are many obstacles to children learning period that begin in the home before they get to the school. And so we must also begin to try to identify those problems so that we can incorporate a solution to them so that the reading will not be as hard to, to accomplish.
Thank you. And, uh, then, uh, candidate Wilford.
Um, you know, we have been just stagnant for so many years, um, in this district when it comes to our, um, kids reading at grade level and something has to change. We have a billion-dollar budget and we are still using programs that clearly have not, um, resulted in, in gains in reading. So I think we need to change that. I think we need to hire people rather than more computers. Um, we have, you know, instruct- reading instruction specialists who spend a lot of time, you know, proctoring tests rather than working with students. Um, we have, um, I think we need more play-based instruction for the younger grades. I think, you know, that would really help. I think a focus on phonics would also be a benefit to our readers. Um, you know, I think we need to get rid of some of the, um, sit and stare policies. You know, after a test, if a kid has an hour, they just have to sit there and, and wait for everybody else. I think they should be able to read a book. And, um, I think, uh, programs like Reading Buddies is really helpful where people in maybe second grade match up with fifth graders and they have a joint, uh, program together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the next question will be for candidate Golden. And do you have one from chat, Ruth?
Um, yes, but actually this question is geared to candidate, uh, Wilford. The question is, why did you choose homeschooling until fifth grade for your children?
Uh, that's a fair question. Um, and part of the reason is because we wanted, um, more play-based uh, instruction for our kids. We wanted them to be able to follow their interests. We did not do any grades. We did not do any testing for the first ten years of their lives. Um, and that has worked out very well for them. Um, and, uh, we, you know, I have to say, I had one child who for probably a year read and wrote only about Lego, um, you know, but that was what he was interested in. So it was really child-led learning. Um, he talked about every aspect of Lego that you can imagine, but it was, um, our focus was making sure that our kids were interested in learning and that they were not focused on grades or any kind of external thing. So I understand that that's not going to translate to a public education system, but that was part of our reasoning for homeschooling.
Okay. Um, in an effort for equal time, I'm going to, to switch to candidate Golden to talk about homeschooling.
Um, my concern about homeschooling and literally any of the other alternatives to public schools is simply that the standards to which public schools are called to operate under for curriculum, for employment, uh, for use of resources. If you are able to do that as, uh, candidate Wilford was able to do with her children, that's fine. I just have a real problem when you ask for the tax dollars that you've already put into the system as a part of the public education process to be rebated to you. Uh, to be able to have your own for-profit school or your own homeschool or whatever other alternative mechanism. So that, that, that's about what I have to say, not only about homeschooling, but about alternatives to public education. My commitment as a member of the school board of Manatee County is to try to provide the best quality public education as is possible and as is feasible.
Thank you. And, uh, candidate Tatum, uh, could you speak to homeschooling?
Yes. So as part of my Air Force career, I was a recruiter for the Air Force Academy as well as for Air Force ROTC programs. And I had to go out and interview candidates that wanted to get Air Force ROTC scholarships as well as appointments to the United States Air Force Academy. And by and large, the homeschoolers that I saw were very well-educated. They had great work ethics. A lot of them lived on farms in rural communities. They were, they were just outstanding young individuals. And so, uh, I'm not biased against that at all. I, I've seen that succeed on a number of occasions. My evidence is pretty solid. These people went on to get appointments to the Air Force Academy to get scholarships. If they hadn't had the qualifications and the education they needed to obtain those, those scholarships and those rewards, they would not have gotten them. The Air Force is not necessarily in the, uh, position to hand out those things to people that are not going to succeed in difficult scholarship programs in universities as well as at the Air Force Academy. Thank you.
Okay, Ruth, do you, this one will start, uh, we'll, we'll switch places. Uh, uh, with candidate Wilford, do you have another question? From chat?
Um, yes. If Manatee County ten years from now achieved and won a national award for- Um, yes. If Manatee County 10 years from now achieved one, a national award for academic quality, what are some of the specific efforts you think it would take for Manatee to achieve this? To in 10 years win a national quality award for its school system?
A national award? That sounds, that sounds amazing. I think it would come down to innovation and I think we do have some great programs already in the county. And I think, for example, the aviation program that's coming, we have automotive, we have construction in different areas of the county. But also in our public schools, TSA, I think is one of the, that's the Technology Student Association. That's one that all of my kids have been very involved in. So I think it's maybe outside of the core curriculum. But those are things that students can get very heavily involved in. And the district has been very supportive of those programs and I think we need to build on that and that's what would get us that national award.
Thank you. Candidate Tatum.
So again, in a minute, I'll focus on one thing in particular, and that is really improving the leadership skills of the administrators, the principals and the school administrators. Because if, when, when employees come to work, whether it's teachers assistants or people that work with money, finance directors in schools and obviously the teachers themselves, if they come in and they feel like they're seen as human beings and that the leadership above them is, is there to help them and provide them resources and mentorship to do their job. They are going to perform at a higher level as teachers. I've seen this happen in organization and after organization of my leadership education. I've seen it happen in school systems, the ability to resolve conflicts with parents and between teachers and students. It just, a lot of that comes down to leadership. So one thing I'd really like to focus on is developing those how to win friends and influence people skills. That improves the performance of any organization, schools, fire departments, businesses, et cetera. Thank you.
Candidate Golden.
Thank you very much. First off, I don't think it will take 10 years because we are already way down the road in terms of trying to have and to, to, to produce quality education in Manatee County. The TSA student, the Technology Student Association that Mrs. Wilford referred to that her children were involved in has already been the recipients of number one rankings, not only statewide, but nationally. Secondly, this is not going to happen if we just keep changing engineers to drive this train ever so often because of the political winds that blow. The superintendent of this district is now participating in the state of Florida's Leadership Florida class. The superintendent of this district now last year was, was the superintendent of the year in the state of Florida. And there are other people in the system who have made their mark, not only doing things in this county, but they're used by other counties, particularly in the area of security and safety. We're an example for other districts already.
Thank you. Okay, we are, I was going to do one more question, but I think order to have the wrap up and everything in time, we're going to go to the one-minute wrap-up. And we will start with candidate Tatum. Could you?
I appreciate everybody tuning in today. Again, as I mentioned at the beginning, the civic involvement is vital to our form of government here in the United States of America. And I would just ask the people who are going to go vote for us, you know, pick your candidate based on the qualifications that you see. And I submit that there are three primary areas, leadership, which is winning friends and influencing people. Management, what kind of type of management experience do we have in large organizations? Remember the budget is a billion dollars, about 8,000 employees, 52,000 students. That's a large organization. People that go in there need lots of experience leading and managing in those type of organizations. And then having an academic background is, I think, a unique quality because it allows you to interact with the principals and the superintendent and the people within the school system. So leader, leadership, management and education experience and to make your choice based on the, the people that have the most experience in those areas. Thank you for your time today. It's great being with you all.
Yeah. Candidate Golden.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be a part of this activity. I am just extremely proud and humble at the opportunity to have already served for four years on the Manatee County School Board. And I am hopeful that the people in this community will find me deserving for four more years. One of the things that I'm most happy about is that last year, the Florida Legislature passed a law that required teaching civics education to all 11th and 12th graders in Manatee County, well, in the whole state of Florida. And we are hoping to be able to use that to increase children's involvement and commitment and to help them to shape the future that they would like to have. Not a future that I think that they should have based on my experiences. I want them to use my experiences to make a better future. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to participate.
Thank you. And candidate Wilford.
Well, thank you. I want to share in the gratitude to the League of Women Voters for hosting this, you know, and, and getting engaging voters. I think that is very important. You know, I'm an education-focused parent, you know, with schools in the, with the children in the school district right now. And I think that that is a benefit because I see what they come home with, what's in their textbooks, you know, what's going on in the classrooms. And I think that's something to consider. I know an elected position is, is a big responsibility and I would be, you know, honored to have, have your vote. And I welcome any feedback, any questions, you know, on my website or through my Facebook page. But I appreciate everyone's time today and thank you very much.
Thank you. This video will be available on our website, which is LWV for League of Women Voters, manatee.org. And if you, if you click on advocacy and click on videos, it will be there. We also have a YouTube channel. So that if you go to the YouTube channel, it will be up before the end of the day, available to people. On, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we would like to thank candidates Golden, Tatum and Wilford and all of you that attended. We, making these videos available is really important in a nonpartisan position. If no candidate gets more than 50%, then the top two are going to be on the general election ballot and this video will stay up. And I guarantee you, we will get phone calls from people that when it's an NPA position, they say, who do I vote for? And I say, go to the video, you will know who to vote for by the end of the video. So that it's, it's, it's an important thing and I really thank you for doing this. We, please join us this Wednesday. We will have the two other school board candidate forums. At noon is District Two with Susan Agruso, Harold Byrd and Cindy Spray. And at five o'clock is Chad Chote and Sean Connolly. And don't forget to vote. Thank you.